Further, I'm actually seeing, seen it on here.
That's the other.
Okay.
That's the sound.
Good evening. I would like to welcome everyone to the work session today at Patton Township. And for those who are able, please join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands by nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So as has been case for a couple of months now, we are holding this session virtually. Three of our supervisors are attending virtually. I want to, a minute, I'll open up, ask for any questions or comments from citizens. And I want to point out that if you are not present in the room here, you may call in direct to make a comment. I would also just like to say that I believe in the past, we've held the work sessions to about an hour. Not that this work is not extremely important, but in the, in the interest of time of everyone here, and also with the understanding that we are not actually voting on any issues during this session, that we want to keep our comments tailored and focused whenever And with that, I'm going to call for any public comments or questions, if there be any. We've got one, two people in the audience. I know the two are, both are speaking. Seeing none, we'll go on to the reason that we are all here, which is to continue to examine Patton Township police policies. There are three policies that we'll be discussing specifically tonight. One is military surplus equipment. Another is no-knock search warrants. And finally, the use of deadly force. So I think we will just turn this over to Chief.
I'd suggest we get Mr. Ben Jones is with us. He's the one who-
I was just, that's why I was hesitating.
-brought us these, these model policies. And if he'd like to make some additional comments, this would now would be the time. And I kind of set these up to what I thought was probably the least amount of discussion to the most-
Right. Right, I think you're right. Certainly feel that, so, thank you.
Sure.
So just tell us your name and where, what's your street is, and proceed.
Ben Jones lives here in the township on Westgate Drive. So thanks for the opportunity to still consider these items. So I went over these, the last meetings, I won't belabor these points. The one thing, I guess I'll just use this as a time to ask some questions about additional stuff that I looked up. So with military equipment, I know that the township, the police department here in the township doesn't, doesn't have a policy of buying military equipment. The one thing I had a question about was, I know that the county has a tactical response team. And I was looking up some of their articles about the response team and did see that, like, they had a, an armored vehicle that they use. And so it seems like they do have some military equipment. Now, I think, like, having a tactical response team is critically important should there, God forbid, ever be an active shooter situation or something like that. And I, from my understanding, that's what it is set up to respond to. But my question was, sort of, who's in charge? Who's, what do their activities look like when thankfully there aren't active shooter, shooter situations and stuff? You know, my big concern would be, is, you know, is it being used for, like, executing drug warrants and those sorts of things? And that's, you know, I know that there are some Patton, Patton officer, Patton Township police officers who are involved in the, in the task force and that we partner with it. So that, that's one thing I just like some clarification on. And given that, I think having these are all the more important, these proposals, because if, if that would be the entity that might carry out a no-knock warrant or something along those lines, having these policies in place saying that that's not something we want to do would be important. Is there anything else? I, I, because I don't know what else.
No, that, that is great. And as we get into the individual topics, if you have something additional, additionally to add, feel free to come up. I, for one, feel overwhelmed with all the information and especially given the critical nature of making a good decision, so.
Yeah, well, let's, let me just suggest that we deal with the 1033 program first. Because that's where we started off on. And then we can go, come on, talk about tactical response and what they do and the equipment they use. And I think we can look at that also. So Chief, if you've got-
Sure.
-comments on the 1033 program.
Certainly. So just to give you a little bit of background, we did discuss, the township does have equipment that came from a federal surplus, like we talked about, the Mini-14 rifles. We, we do not participate currently in the 1033 program. The rifles that we have, as I mentioned before, we're trying to get rid of for about the last five years. They're, they're kind of antiquated. But they came from the U.S. General Services Administration, or GSA, Federal Surplus Personal Property Donation Program. We actually obtained those, eight rifles, back in May of 2002. So I apologize, I thought it was in the nineties, but it was early 2000s, through the GSA program. And the GSA program and 1033 are different programs. They're not the same thing. They are separate. In the GSA program, you don't pay a fee to be involved in the program, but you do pay, in, in our instance, for the rifles, I think, with a 10% acquisition price for each item that you get. And then the 1033 program, again, which we are not members of, they charge you $400 per year. And then you can get property basically five days a week at no, no further cost to the agency. When people talk about the 1033 program across the country, they're, they're talking about guns, they're talking about armored vehicles, and a lot of the, the military equipment that you would, would associate with the military as far as weapons and armored vehicle, that program really is for anything from paperclips to helicopters. It covers everything in between. You can get office equipment. So it's, it's not just limited to firearms or, or things that we now kind of put together with, with militarization of the police. It could be desk chairs, lamps, maybe, so. So it's a very broad program. But again, we have not been members of that. And we're trying to separate ourselves from the other, the other program that we did obtain these firearms back in 2002. And we're at the point now where either we can destroy them, or we can find another agency who will take them on and will donate them and kind of continue on through that process. But at this point, we do have four Mini-14 rifles that again, we're hoping to, to be able to offload.
Which we don't use.
We do not use them at all. They're locked up in our own way. And we have not used them since around the early 2000, like mid 2000s, probably. We haven't used them quite some time.
Okay.
So the only, I mean, you know, for this one, I mean, you know, I just, again, you know, I hate to say, never, ever, ever, we never, ever need something from the 1033 program. You know, there could be a time when we, you know, maybe you're going to be doing surveillance or a big project, and we need 20 pairs of binoculars or something along those lines, where we potentially could have $15,000 in cost for some equipment that, you know, potentially we could get from that program for a $400 a year membership. So that's the only caution I have. I'm not, I don't foresee us ever looking to buy an armored vehicle or getting an armored vehicle from this program or any weapons, for that matter. The township owns all the weapons that we currently train in, deploy, and, and use in our day-to-day jobs as a police officer. So that's pretty much all I have as far as the 1033.
Yeah. I'm going to open it up for board questions. I see that Dan has one, and I actually can see our other three board members quite distinctly. So I hope I'll be able to see that hand when it goes up. If not, you know the routine, just call out.
Okay. Chief, one, I think I have a couple of questions. One, if our board actually did pass a, a resolution or an ordinance to not purchase military equipment, not participate at all in the 1033 program, what kind of imposition, negative imposition is, is it on your police force now or in the future?
You know, for right now, I can't think of anything. And again, in the past here, we have not used it. So it's something that we haven't used, so I can't say that, you know, that moving forward, again, the only thing I could say, I can foresee would be an example, like I gave, of binoculars or something along those lines. Potentially, there could be a fairly significant fee that through a government assist the program, we'd be able to get them for minimal to no cost.
Second question, do you, when you've had to purchase equipment for your police department in the past, do you make a, a routine examination of what's available through this 1033 program? See if you can acquire it that way before you go out and spend money to purchase?
Generally, no. Just because, again, we're, since we're not participating in it, it's really not an option open to us. We'd have to go back through, through an application process to go in, into, to be members of the program and to pay the fee. Generally, the way I do it is I, in fact, I just sent the email the other day to patrol officers saying, is there any, any equipment, anything that we're looking, training, interested in? And then we'll budget for those items in the fall of the year.
Okay.
Whoops, I lost my view of my teammates here. Pam Robb, Anita Teasor, Elliott Abrams, do you-
Elliott has his hand up.
Oh, you do have your hand. Gosh, and I missed it. Elliott, yes, Mr. Abrams, please, go ahead.
We're talking about different items that if we didn't have them, would they be a problem? But are there any other resources or items that because we don't have them, it's a problem, and that maybe we should be looking into them?
I didn't catch the first part of that.
Yeah, we couldn't hear you right beginning, Elliott. Can you repeat the question, please?
Thank you, yeah.
Well, we've been talking, we've been talking about if, if we didn't have certain items, would that be a detriment? And so my question is sort of the opposite one. Are there any items that the department could use that the supervisors could approve and are generally acceptable, but that you don't have now, that would be helpful to have?
So, yeah, at the present time, we, we don't have anything major that we're looking to purchase. I will say, we're lucky. Our agency is well-equipped and we're well-trained. We have, there are a couple of things that, since I put that email out, we're getting some response back from some of the officers. For, one of the big things is actually accident investigation. They have new drone technology to help us map serious accident scenes. So there, there potentially could be some higher-ticket items that are coming down the line. But for right, right this moment, there's, there, we don't really have a need for or a want for anything.
Great, and, uh, thank you.
Just related to another question.
Yes, Elliott, go ahead.
I, I hear across the country, people talking about defunding police departments, and I hear different interpretations of that. And one is actually giving less funds to a police department, and the second is reallocating funds to stress different things that the department does. And do we really have a definition that if somebody asks us what, what our policy is on it, we haven't really discussed it, I don't think?
No, we haven't. But that can be a topic we, I mean, we'll have to discuss it as part of the budget coming up here in the next few months. So probably the major thing is, is, might be the mental health services. And there is a, there is a task force, a county-wide task force, that's currently looking at that. I would say our best, our best approach is to wait until we get the findings from that task force to make any movement on, in that area.
Should be September, I believe. Pardon? Should be in September.
September, okay. That's quicker than I thought it was going to be, but that's good.
That's the target date for you now, so, yeah.
So that, that'll work well if we look at our budget and stuff and see what effects that might have on, on budget areas. And next month, we'll, or later this month, we'll have a little better idea on COVID impacts, too, so.
Okay. Elliott, are you finished?
Yes.
Okay. I see Anita's Teas has her hand up.
Chief Jolly, I appreciate your mentioning the example of maybe needing 20 pair of binoculars if there was a major incident. Does the Patton Township police have a kind of joint share reciprocal with surrounding agencies? So if we needed 20 pair of binoculars, some of the other townships could loan us some of their binoculars?
Yeah, I mean, so we obviously rely heavily on mutual aid in this area. You know, we constantly are assisting other agencies. Patton and Ferguson are cross-sworn. So I'm sure that if there was a need that we had, that was unmet, we could definitely go to our neighboring departments and ask for some assistance. Sure.
Okay, great. And Pam, I keep losing the, any questions from you? Pam?
No.
Okay. All right, thank you. I have a couple of, actually, I guess, a suggestion. And I was not aware of the $400 annual fee. It makes perfect sense. The other program was called a GFA?
GS, S.A., GSA.
General Services-
General Services Administration.
Wait, say-
GSA, General Services Administration.
Oh, sure. Thank you. Okay. S and F, okay, perfect, yes. Because one, sort of compromise solution I had, I was thinking through was a way to word a resolution or an ordinance that would allow some flexibility with some oversight by the board. And if there were certain areas that we could prescribe for bid, such as vehicles and weapons, it's, it sounds like it's unlikely that we would use those. Some purchases that we could unconditionally allow, such as paperclip surveillance equipment, radios, I noticed other electronics, and then others that we could conditionally permit but with board approval. And that might be something such as protective equipment, gear, clothing, that can come in all sorts of flavors. Some can be very militarized, and some can be very civilianized, I guess, for lack of another word. I think an issue here is the actual militarization of the police and the perceived militeration of the police. We don't want to do either. I certainly don't. And I'm assuming my fellow board members share that. But the perceived militeration is obviously up for definition, depending on who is sitting where and making decisions. I also don't want to get a, an ordinance or resolution that is very complex and hard to understand. With that said, Chief, is that something that would make sense to you? And if so, I would suggest tasking the staff to come up with a very simple way of getting one or two categories, saying that we will not purchase any weapons or vehicles, yada, yada. And I would actually like to get comments from Mr. Ben Jones.
Yeah, I think that, that, that makes sense from my perspective. I mean, I'm not terribly worried about night vision binoculars. It's more the, you know, armored vehicles and the weapons.
Right.
So I think that, that approach makes sense.
Okay. And I certainly know it would be an economic decision. You'd have to weigh, obviously, the upfront cost of $400 a year versus the savings of getting material for free. So any comments from the peanut gallery concerning my suggestion there?
Sounds good to me.
Okay. If there are no objections of, I'll just go ahead and task request that the staff at work with Chief Jolly to come up with a list, and we'll examine that hopefully at our August meeting.
Yeah, we can do that.
Great. Okay, thank, thank you for that. And-
Probably should spend some time talking about tactical response team.
Oh, sure.
And I don't know if we're going to have enough time to do it tonight. Because we're going to have to give you some, some, we're going to have to go into more depth about what they do and all that stuff. We come back and talk about that, and I'm sure, I'm sure Mr. Jones wants to talk about that.
Well, we all have to talk about now. Well, like-
Yeah, I was going to suggest we put, put, put that on a future agenda and bring you some more information back.
The reason I brought it up is I thought it might be relevant to the no-knock.
Yes or no?
Yeah.
But let's, let's, let's talk about it at another time so we can get some more background information that people can absorb and stuff before we try to have a discussion about it, so.
And this is relevant to?
Somewhat, it's related to military type, or the militarization or the perceived militeration of, of police.
Gotcha. Okay, sure.
I have a question.
Oh, yes, sure. Thank you, Anita.
I, I have a legal question in terms of our ability to pass an ordinance. I noticed that the positions on encouraging the military surplus equipment have changed between administrations. That the last administration, after a task force review, put out a recommendation kind of banning it. And the current administration is encouraging it. And who knows what administration we will have next? But in terms of any national recommendation, how does that impact the township's legal authority? If we go ahead and create an ordinance, is it subject to the changing winds of a national administration?
I don't believe so. That might change what's available or not available at a certain time, but I don't believe it impacts our, our ability one way or another to participate. I don't know if the solicitor has anything else to add.
Good, excellent. Thank you.
Okay. Great, thank you. So we're okay with moving on to the second?
Yeah, we'll, we'll come up with a draft of that and bring it back on the 19th.
Yeah, thank you for that. That's great. We move next to the no-knock search warrants. And again, should, let's see. I, I do want both the Chief and Mr. Jones to weigh in. I think they're, if you could give a summary remarks, but I think we'll, we'll start with the Chief. And especially if you could review Commonwealth versus Newman and Commonwealth versus De Michael. And correct me if I've gotten the sequence inappropriate here. Dog, do you-
No, that's fine.
Okay, great.
So with regard to no-knock warrant, and I might have done this a disservice at a previous meeting, so Pennsylvania, and I checked with the district attorney's offices to be sure I was providing the most accurate information to you here, we do not have them in Pennsylvania.
We do not.
They do not exist in Pennsylvania.
You cannot do a no-knock warrant.
So the case law, and what we do is, when we're serving a search warrant, we follow the rules of criminal procedure in the state of Pennsylvania. And in Rule 207, which is on page 11 of 29 in the packet that was provided under investigations.
Oh, right, okay.
So it's the manner of entry into premise. Essentially, that indicates and that dictates the fact that we must knock, announce our purpose and our authority. Now, I did mention there are four exigent circumstances. And I, I did also provide a lot of case law that goes along with what I'm telling you right now. So again, there, on the, let's see here, about halfway down, I think, is where the exigent circumstances in general come in. But there are four circumstances where the police have applied to a judge, whether it be a magisterial district judge or a common police judge, and they issue us a search warrant. Like I said, the judges in Pennsylvania, the state of Pennsylvania, cannot write into our warrant or allow us to write into the warrant that we want to go and not knock and announce when we get to the residence.
Okay.
So that, that's not an option. And we have to serve them between 6:00 AM and 10:00 PM.
Okay, great.
Now, judges can grant a nighttime exception. So if there is an issue where either we're not going to be able to get to the residence before 10:00 PM, or for other reason we want to serve it before 6:00 AM, judges can sign off and say, you can do it outside of those hours. But generally, it's from 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
Great.
But to the knock and announce, they cannot allow us, as them authorizing the search warrant, to not knock and announce. And again, the exigent circumstances, there's four of them. It's when we, excuse me, where the occupants remain silent after repeated knocking and announcing. The police are virtually certain that the occupants of the premise already know their purpose. We have reason to believe that an announcement prior to entry would imperil the safety of our officers or for the destruction of evidence. So we have a signed warrant from a judge. As we're approaching the residence, if one of those four circumstances exists, then we can make entry and forego knocking and announcing. However, the case law shows, in many of these cases, it's talking about how the evidence was fruit of a unlawful entry. So it's, it's been suppressed, and that means we end up losing the case, losing the evidence. A lot of these discuss that. And the other two cases, Newman and De Michael, like you had mentioned, exactly that. Those were unlawful entries because they didn't knock, announce their purpose. So they lost, they end up losing the evidence for that, for those cases. Generally, how we operate, again, you know, we, we get the signed warrant from a judge, we assemble the officers who are going to go and serve the warrant, we go to the residence. Once we get there, we assign the very first officer to be the knock and announce officer. So they will, they will start pounding on, on the door. And as they're pounding, they're, they're saying three things. Police, search warrant, open the door. And they continue to repeat that over and over again. There is some case law and some different things talking about what is a reasonable, so we have to wait a reasonable amount of time to allow the occupants to surrender their property to us. There's, again, there's been some debate over what a reasonable amount of time is. And there's different circumstances that kind of come into play there. One of them could be, are we going to a one-bedroom, one-room apartment where the person should likely be able to get to the door in 10 or 15 seconds? Or are we at a six-bedroom, three-story house, but they could be upstairs sleeping, and they may want to give that person a minute or possibly- they may want to give that person a minute or possibly even more depending. So again, it's circumstance dependent. But again, that whole time, the officer is knocking and announcing who we are, our authority, and then our purpose, being that we're there to serve a search warrant. If we get compliance and they come down and open the door, we advise that we're there to serve a search warrant, we clear the house to make sure that there's no other individuals present, and then we go about our business. So that's generally how that goes. If we do not get an answer, or if one of those exceptions comes into play, then we will force our way in if we need to.
Can I ask you to repeat those four circumstances? And I apologize if they were in that large document, and I didn't digest them.
Yep. So fifth page.
Oh, of the one that was handed to us.
Do you have it already?
Thank you. Oh, you know what? Yes, thank you so much. Thanks, Ben. Okay.
Would you like me to verbally read them again?
Yes, actually, for the benefit of our...
Sure, certainly.
...our audience.
Yep. So there are four circumstances in which police executing warrant may enter without complying with the knock and announce rule. Number one, where occupants remain silent after repeated knocking and announcing. Two, where police are virtually certain that occupants of premise already know their purpose. Three, where police have reason to believe that an announcement prior to entry would imperil their safety. And then lastly, where police have reason to believe that evidence is about to be destroyed.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you. I thought I'd seen that somewhere. Thank you so much. Okay.
Madam Chair, I have a...
Yes. Yeah, sorry, I'm just catching up on my thoughts here. So, yes, Mr. Trevino.
I think some of the concern from myself and citizens about no-knock warrant is the assumption that, or not the assumption, the fear that in case of a mistake on an address, which does happen, that the officers who have the warrant may have one of these four reasons to believe that the exigent circumstances exist and they will basically break into a residence. And wasn't it Breonna Taylor? That was a mistake by the...
Well, that was a correct address, but mistaken occupant.
And it was the wrong address?
No, it was the correct address. They were looking for someone else.
Someone who had moved, essentially.
Okay.
Who didn't reside there, but was using that as an address.
Mistakes happen.
Yeah.
A homeowner who may be armed but innocent of any wrongdoing, and someone is breaking down their door, even though they may not believe the announce, well, there's no announcement. So someone's breaking into their house. They may shoot at the officers that are entering.
And that's actually the whole premise of this, is for the safety of the occupant and the officers is the knocking and announcing. And I understand what you're saying, but if, you know, if we go to a residence, as far as destruction of evidence, if we're going and there's, you know, it's a drug house and we've done buys from this place, you know, they may see us pulling up, we see movement inside the house, and then all of a sudden we hear a bunch of toilets flushing. We have pretty good probable cause to believe that they're destroying evidence inside.
Yep, I understand that. And probably in whatever, 80, 90% of cases, it's justified that the officers should not announce before they forcibly enter.
We do announce. We must, by state law in Pennsylvania, we must.
But if there's an exigent circumstance, they don't have to, right?
If one of those is, but I'd say in probably 90, well, I can tell you, again, in our experience here in Patton Township, and speaking to officers who've been there for over 30 years, we've never, ever used one of those circumstances.
I think the case law has set that at a very high bar.
Sure, I understand.
Yeah, I see now.
I'm just stating, a non-police officer, a citizen, we have no background in law enforcement or training or anything. That's what we fear, you know, a circumstance that I just related. So my question is, well, first of all, it sounds like in Pennsylvania, we don't have such, something called a no-knock warrant, right?
Yeah, in Kentucky, a judge could authorize a no-knock warrant. That's not permissible in Pennsylvania.
Not permissible. So why do, why do we, as a board supervisor, why do we need to take any action on that? Because there doesn't seem to be a need for an ordinance by our township.
It seems like that of the third of the four circumstances, if an announcement would imperil the safety of officers, then that is effectively a no-knock warrant or dynamic entries, the other word I'm learning. And it's, it's not, I guess it's maybe a question of nomenclature because the warrant itself was not for no-knock.
Correct.
Right? However, the actual entry itself was then what I guess is called commonly a dynamic entry, at least in some.
So like, yeah, you could, even if you don't get a no-knock warrant, there could still be a no-knock raid if one of these, one of these conditions are met. And the last, the final two, I mean, like, one is if police believe that evidence is about to be destroyed. You know, that's a risk, but is given the inherent dangerousness of no-knock warrants, is that's, would we want the police busting in because someone's flushing some drugs down the toilet? And that's why I think, I mean, Breonna Taylor, that was a drug, you know, based on drugs. And I think despite not getting a formal no-knock warrant, you could still do a no-knock raid if one of these, if the police believe one of these conditions are met. And that's, that doesn't make much difference to the person who's in the house. Like, regardless of if there is a no-knock warrant, what they're experiencing will be exactly the same. And so that's why I think an ordinance is still needed, and, you know, the debate will have to be the idea, you know, could this endanger police if you put this in place?
Yeah, absolutely.
Because the one circumstance is police have reason to believe that an announcement prior to entry would imperil their safety. What I would say is you already have a couple of states that don't allow no-knock warrants and raids, and, you know, the skies in...
Oregon.
Oregon and Florida.
Florida.
And so, and you actually, if you look at these cases where no-knock raids have happened, there have been a number of police officers shot because people bust in, if they have a gun, they grab it, they don't know who it is. And this is also not a tactic that police have used for a long, long time. It's mainly a creation from the war on drugs. And I think this is one of the powers that, you know, through the war on drugs, mass incarceration, that police have gotten, that I think more people are asking, is this a power that they should have?
And, oh, and I see Pam Robb has her hand up. Sorry, I didn't see that earlier. Okay. Yes?
No, no problem. I just have to ask, what are the other townships' response to this?
I personally haven't polled them. I can tell you that we all operate under the same rules of criminal procedure that are issued by the state. So I would assume that they would have very similar procedures.
Okay.
In fact, I, I was going to say, in fact, I know they do because we serve warrants together. So we do it the same way.
I'm just curious because this topic has been on the agendas of most of our townships. And I'm just curious what reactions and what their responses are. And now that you said it's nonpermissible, it might be looking at a mute situation here.
Well, right, or certainly a variation of the no-knock warrant, and we're calling it a no-knock raid.
I will say, there are different studies have been done on no-knock warrants and raids, and generally, the way Pennsylvania is categorized among the various states is that they are a state that allows no-knock raids. Because if police believe that evidence is about to be destroyed, there's no obligation to knock and announce. And so what people will experience is exactly the same as a state that does require a formal warrant. And so a no-knock warrant, so, you know, these, there are small legal differences, but in terms of what does it look like in practice, it doesn't look all that different.
And just real quickly, in a rebuttal to the De Michael case law, one of the things that it actually says is, "One of the prices we have to pay for the security which the Fourth Amendment bestows upon us is the risk that an occasional guilty party will escape." So there's case law saying that, you know what, just because you hear a flushing of a toilet doesn't necessarily mean that you're going to be justified in going into that situation. So there is case law that addresses even those exceptions as well. And that, like I said, that's right out of the De Michael case, the ruling on that. And again, we don't, we don't put destruction of evidence above the safety of our officers, definitely.
Yeah.
Nor above the safety of our citizens, even if it's somebody who we're going into, we know we're going to arrest them because of the drug warrant. If they are destroying evidence, that is not paramount to our safety. Definitely not.
To your knowledge, to the time you've been here, have we ever entered a house without announcing?
No. Now, like I said, I discussed that with other officers from other agencies, from some of the drug detectives who generally are doing the warrants, as Mr. Jones pointed out. Generally, these are talking about drug cases. And State College's drug detective who's done hundreds of search warrants has never ever used any...
Yeah, and I think, and I'll speak because I, you know, I don't have, but most of the drug cases are built fairly solidly before you go to a point of having a search warrant. That's probably one of the last pieces that the investigators want to put together. So it, you know, it's not, if we don't get that, if we don't get that evidence as part of that search warrant, we won't have a case at all. It's not the first thing they do. What I'm trying to say is one of the last things they do in terms of investigating a drug, a drug incident, or drug crime. So, you know, I guess it kind of comes down to, do we leave the exigent circumstances in there or not? And mostly, the exigent circumstances are there for officer's safety or for those few other incidences, like you said, destruction of drugs. But my reading of the case law seems to be that the courts in Pennsylvania have set a fairly high bar, that they're more willing to throw evidence out than they are to look the other way at what police did.
So, I'm looking for hands.
Our solicitor has her hand up.
Oh, and yes, please, thank you. You're not on my screen. Sorry about that.
That's okay. I would agree with both Supervisor Robb and Supervisor Trevino that this may be premature to look at this issue for a couple of reasons. One, I do think that, which may not always be true in other parts of the Commonwealth, but certainly in Center County, I think as the chief and manager have said, there's a really specific process that one goes through to get a search warrant. The district attorney has to review that. And in fact, I think in our case, in our county, there's two DAs that are available at any time to review those things. But then they have to go in front of a judge. And we don't have a history of judges in this county issuing warrants without an awful lot of background and information and doing their job. It's important to understand the review process. But I think it's also important that Patton Township look at this more broadly than just Patton Township, because you do have officers from other jurisdictions who will come into your township, and that includes the state police. And, you know, one of the things that I think we want to look at very carefully is what leverage you have over the crimes code to affect things that are handled in your township. And I'm not saying, by the way, that you don't, but I think this is something we want to investigate and not simply jump into designing an ordinance until we know what that looks like and where things are. And I certainly understand the concern, but I do think that's part of the reason Pennsylvania does have the standards that it has. And it's a pretty robust crimes code and pretty much protective crimes code. And I would rather have us walk through this and look at the law very clearly before you guys start down the road working on an ordinance that may really not be needed at the moment. And I, again, I understand the concerns, but I think it's a little premature in the process. And again, there might be a regional approach to this, and I would include the district attorney's office and a lot of other folks, because this is, this is not a decision that any one of the officers in this township or any township makes a decision and just, you know, proceeds. As Doug said, there's an awful lot of work that gets done to build a case. And I won't, I won't put our DA in a bad spotlight, but I think our DA's office has had a history of being particularly stringent in granting or supporting warrants and taking them to judges in ways that may not always be true, especially in more urban areas, where you have a lot more things going on. And I'm not excusing that, I'm just saying that I think our district attorneys and our judges have a lot more time to be looking at things more thoroughly, and they do.
Any comments from the board? Oh, yes, Anita. Yes, please.
I think those are excellent insights. I would just raise the point that one of the writers, and I don't know him, who gave comment through email about this, Sam Black, who talked about the need for policies to be preventive and proactive. So if we could just keep this on the radar, I can agree that maybe now is not the time, but I think from the citizen's perspective, that fear that Supervisor Trevino identified is very real. And maybe now is not the time, or it's not the way, given the stringency of current warrant requirements. But I think to be proactive and preventative is a principle that we need to keep in mind.
Can I say one thing?
Yes, please.
Ferguson happened in 2014.
I'm sorry?
Ferguson happened in 2014. Center County had discussions around this issue. You had the task force in 2016. There were recommendations made by that task force. To my knowledge, none of those recommendations have been implemented. There was an article on how there were zero black police officers out of over 120 in Center County. Osasuna Osagi was shot more than 500 days ago. There's yet to, and I know this didn't happen here, but it happened in a neighboring jurisdiction. Nothing concrete has changed about policing since that happened. There's been a resolution passed about wanting to do changes, and that's not you, but there was still no actual concrete change to what powers police have. And I've, you know, this is the third, fourth meeting that we've had about this, and there have been study after study about policing. And I think we've figured out some things that are not working, that are dangerous. And I would put no-knock warrants in that category. And I think one thing I've observed with local government is that, you know, if you try to change something, some people are going to be upset. It's going to make some people uncomfortable. And the day that Osagi was shot, that earlier or later that night, Bryan Stevenson was speaking. He was, he's a leading civil rights figure. He came here to State College, same day that a white police officer shot a black individual with mental illness. And during that speech, he said, "I look for examples where justice prevailed, where liberty won, equality triumphed, and nobody had to do anything uncomfortable or inconvenient. I can't find any examples of that. It only happens when good people position themselves to do uncomfortable things." And yes, Patton Township would be the first municipality in Center County to ban no-knock raids, and that would be a good thing. And it might actually be an impetus for other townships to do the same, other boroughs. And that's why I would, because all that we've talked about, okay, yes, the... And that's why I would, because all that we've talked about, okay, yes, the, the district attorney is very, you know, discerning on when he gives out warrants, but at the end of the day, police officers still have the discretion, when they go to serve that warrant, if they believe that there's one of these exigent circumstances that are met, that they could bust, bust down the door without knocking and announcing. And that power is still there, and that's a power I think that police shouldn't have. And I think there's a lot of compelling reason for that. And maybe that, you know, maybe this will never happen, it will never actually prevent a no-knock raid. But I was looking up, and there was a dynamic raid in Bethlehem, Pennsylvania, not a huge place where someone died because of a drug bust. And so, I think being proactive is something that, that needs, that we need to do, and it's something that frankly, hasn't been done in Center County since Ferguson and all this discussion has happened. There's been task forces, there are recommendations, nothing happens. And at the end of the day, I mean, we can have debates, and we can have debates, but if, if we're passionate about these issues, if you really want to make change, at the end of the day, you have to make change. So, that's, I will jump off my soapbox, but just what I wanted to say.
Doug, yes?
We have one person on the phone who'd like to comment?
Yes, name and.
Sir, if you're watching the live feed, you'll want to turn the sound down, because it's on a delay. Are you there?
Please stay.
Okay, I'm going to put you on speakerphone now, and everybody here should be able to hear you. Hang on a second. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Hi, this is Jim Payne. Good evening.
Hi, Jim.
Was in Park Forest regarding the no-knock warrant. Even though it seems like nothing is required right now by the board or an ordinance, is there a way to include it in the ordinance, mentioning it? And if the state administration changes their level of, in other words, if we get a super conservative administration and legislature in, and they say you can have no-knock warrants, the board should readdress it at that time? And that's it?
Good, good question. So, I, you're essentially asking if we should be proactive at the local level to be on top of any change that might happen on the state level? Thank you for that. And I, unless anybody else has a comment, I've got a couple of things to say.
Do you have anything else, Jim?
I was hard to, I couldn't hear her answer really.
Oh.
I have no other comment at the moment.
She agreed with you, basically.
And thanked him.
And thank you for calling.
Thank you.
Okay.
Bye now.
He can probably hear me now. The last thing I want to do is put anybody in harm's way, especially our, anybody, and I was going to say especially our police force, but that's because I feel protective, because it's, you're part of my responsibility. But I feel equally as protective of citizens, because they also are part of my responsibility. I, and I realize pointing is that I have no doubt that you are a man of your word, Chief Jolly, and that you and your officers, from the way you manage and people I have met in this course, thoroughly put the value of life above the destruction of evidence. However, you won't be here, well, we hope you'll be here for a long time, but we also know that there's turnover. That is something that I feel very strongly about, and have talked to a number of people about that, that a life is not worth any amount of evidence, and these are not even capital crimes in most cases. And also, I have mixed feelings about the announcement that would imperil safety. You can go in essentially a no-knock raid, unless there is a capital offense involved. Just from one of the, the reading I've done, I'm pulling pieces, but if there is, you know, verbal evidence of a beating or assault on a, on a human life on the other side of the door, then I would think, well, I don't know, I think you would still announce in that case, but then go, go ahead on in. So, all that to say, I agree with what Mr. Jones is saying, that I think there is room for change on this, for action. And we're not going to do it this meeting, and we're not going to do it in August, but I, I want to at least have it on the agenda, or maybe I'll sit down with the manager and come up with, and the chief, and come up, and our solicitor, whoever wants to be involved in that, come up with a timeline and come up with some possible drafts, so that we don't have a number of other meetings here where we're talking about what we're going to do. But that when we come before the public again, I think that is actually okay under the sunshine laws, because we, I would not be talking with multiple board members behind doors. So that we have something concrete that will work and that makes a progress, that makes a step, and that also, as Mr. Jones so eloquently says, perhaps sets a precedence. I think Patton Township has, has done that in affordable housing, and will continue to do that, and I'm very proud of some of the tough decisions that we've made in the last year, couple of years. So, that's my two cents. So, I'll just reach out to you, Doug, and Chief, at a tomorrow or subsequent date, and then see if we can't just come up with something.
Anita.
Yeah. Thank you, yes, Anita.
So, Supervisor Whitman, so do I understand then, the discussion will be to move ahead to look at ways to take action through some sort of an ordinance or concerning?
Or a resolution.
The whole no-knock entry?
Right.
Issue.
Right.
Okay, I, I support that. I support that.
Thank you. And then, we are moving on to the final, to the third of three. Unless anyone has other, any other comments on the no-knock entry. Use of deadly force. I will, yeah, I think we'll have Chief go, and then Mr. Jones go, and then take comments from board, from anybody, board members. Okay.
Okay, sure. So, I, I do have some concerns about changing, you know, the deadly force policy of the Patton Township Police Department. You know, currently, as we've mentioned it before, this is, you know, the wording that we have in our policy is pretty much straight out of the Pennsylvania law, straight out of the Pennsylvania Crimes Code, Title 18, Chapter 5, Section 508 is exactly where we get our wording from. I can tell you that I have, I obtained today, State College Police Department's use of deadly force policy. Ours are verbatim, they're identical. Ferguson Township is very similar, they have some different wording in theirs, but it's very similar to ours. City of Pittsburgh has the exact same wording, straight out of the Crimes Code. And I know, so the, the draft model that Mr. Jones had provided does discuss some, some different agencies. Some of the concern I have with some of the comparisons, you know, we're talking about Philadelphia Police Department, it's a 6,000 officer police department. In a nine-year time period, I got some statistics from 2007 to 2015, their officers discharged their weapons at offenders 412 times. Ninety-eight individuals were killed by the police in that time, and 201 were injured. They also conversely had seven officers who were killed by weapons and 553 who were injured by weapons. DC Metro is also mentioned in the draft policy. They have over 4,000 officers. Five-year time period from 2014 to 2018, they've had 47 intentional firearm discharges at persons, 14 of those resulting in fatalities. And then San Francisco, I believe, is also mentioned from 2009 to 2019, so 11-year time period, they had 72 officers involved shootings. Patton Township Police has been around since 1965, so 55 years, and we have discharged our weapons at individuals zero times. We've never had an officer involved shooting. We've had instances where officers probably should have engaged with deadly force. To give you an example, we had an officer many, many years ago, who was standing behind a tree, and an individual was on their porch with a shotgun, and they actually fired their weapon at the officer, I believe hitting the tree. And that officer never returned fire. It came to a peaceful resolution, we got that person into custody, and we moved on. So, there's probably endless examples of times when we probably could have or should have used deadly force and haven't. I think that goes to really the character of the department, the training that we have, but also the policies and the procedures that we have that we follow. Again, there's, there could be some hardship, I think, that if we start changing our deadly force policy, again, we really rely on mutual aid. So, if we start narrowing ours and either go to another jurisdiction or have officers from other jurisdictions come here, I could see that potentially there could, there could be some issues with, with those types of things. So, that's just a few of the, the issues I have, the fact that, I did talk to Chief Allright, Chief Gardner. At this point, neither Ferguson or State College, in my understanding, are considering any kind of change to their, their policy related to this. I know that there is, some legislation is going through the House, I believe, and I believe it's still alive at this point.
It's probably not going to pass.
Okay.
I mean, this session.
So, so, I mean, I know that, you know, obviously, because of all the events that are happening nationwide, states are thoroughly reviewing their, their policies, their procedures, their laws. So, I just hate to have a knee-dropped reaction where we changed, changed something like this, and potentially, we could have some change coming from the state. Obviously, if the state law changes, our policy is going to change, our procedures, and obviously, all of our training will change at that point as well. But, you know, like I said, I think, again, just a testament to the officers in the, again, pretty much from the hiring process, the whole way through the training process, to the officers, the experience that we have here, the policies that we have in place. And I think that, you know, we need to really think about things before we would consider changing something here.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yes, and, and thank you for the materials that you supplied.
Sure.
Very, very helpful.
Sure. So, in terms of the data that the chief shared, I mean, you could look at, you know, Pittsburgh, how many shootings have they had, how many people have been killed. Anne Fon Rose was a very high-profile case in Pittsburgh, where you could make the case that the way that their deadly force policy read, it actually, you know, sort of made it clear that you could use deadly force in that sort of instance. In terms of waiting for the state to take action, the state passed its deadly force policy in the 1970s. And since then, we've had several Supreme Court decisions that have, one that a lot of experts think goes beyond what the Pennsylvania statute says, to remind everyone the way that the Pennsylvania statute reads, as well as what's currently in policy in Patton Township, as well as State College and other surrounding townships. If someone commits a forcible felony and is fleeing, and the only way to stop them is by using deadly force, it is, is justified according to state law. And so, if we are going to wait until the state to take action, I think that is, that's a, not likely to happen. I mean, I, I hope it happens. I hope that the legislature would take action and address these issues. But what we've seen is, you know, Ferguson happened in 2014, that put this in the, at the top of people's minds, then it went off, and people moved on to the next thing. Already, I mean, we had the protest over George Floyd, people's attention is turning to COVID, and, and it's understandable, but the, the idea that the state's going to take action very soon, I'm skeptical that that will happen. And from my understanding, the Police Executive Research Forum is supposed to come in and do a training in August? Is that still?
I think that Ferguson's still negotiating with them to see if we can get that to happen.
Okay. I mean, the Police Executive Research Forum is very explicit that police departments should adopt policies that go beyond what the minimum, what the minimum is required in federal and state law. And so, if, if that training happens, and it's going to be meaningful, I hope that it result, it, it mirrors changes in policy in terms of what is expected of officers. And the fact that this is in state law doesn't prevent us at all from putting in a policy that goes beyond that. And Philadelphia's done that, other cities and municipalities have. And I would sure hope that if, if, if we, if Patton Township does this, that that might be an impetus for other townships to also put in, put in place a higher standard. So, that, that would be my argument for taking action on this.
I'm going to, I'm going to ask the chief to respond to specifically the fact that state law currently allows law enforcement officers to shoot at a fleeing suspect. Am I wording it?
Forcible, committed a forcible fleeing felony.
The phrase is a forcible fleeing?
Felony.
Felony, okay. So, how you feel about that personally, and given the fact that Patton Township has had zero shooting incidences since the start in 1955, I, I think that does speak to the caliber, but again, we're talking about the, essentially encoding something that already exists, if that's the case. So, if you could respond to that specifically about us making, or that situation?
Sure, yeah. So, I mean, and Mr. Jones has given an example that, as, like you said, if she eats robbery, somebody goes in with a knife, they've committed a forcible felony. Armed robbery is a forcible felony.
Okay.
And then, so that takes care of the first prong of the Gardner statutes, and then they flee. So, as the officers are getting there, for whatever reason, we have the opportunity to get there very quickly that day, and, you know, all the, all the stars align, that potentially deadly force could be used on that individual. Again, our training, we train to a higher standard than that. You know, and basically, we make sure our officers understand that, you know, that we are there to defend, again, life. I mean, life, you know, us investigating a armed robbery, we're happy to put in the three months' worth of work, or whatever it takes, to figure out who that person was, than to, to take a life. That is not, you know, not the mission of the Patton Township Police Department whatsoever. And again, we can come up with example after example of situations where we had just that. In fact, I think Sergeant Stroud was involved in one, where we had a string of armed robberies all throughout our region. It was from an individual who actually was residing in Patton Township, in a neighborhood that's no longer, that no longer exists right now. But we figured out who it was, set up surveillance, he returned from their residence, to the residence at one point, and Officer Stroud, I believe it was you, got into a foot pursuit with that individual. So, we had all the elements there. We potentially could have used deadly force. The person still had their weapon with them, and, and we didn't. And we end up successfully arresting that person, and, and, you know, they're, they're served in their sentence now. But, you know, there's so many circumstances and so many decisions that go through each of these scenarios and each of these situations. And Mr. Jones's example with, you know, the, first of all, one, a lot of times, we don't, we do rely on the information, but sometimes we get information that's not correct, because you have a caller telling the 911 center, they're telling the call taker who's telling the other dispatcher who's giving us the information, so it's the phone game. So, by the time it comes to us, sometimes we're looking for a white female, and it could be a white male who's 6'10". I mean, sometimes it's, you know.
Yeah, for sure.
But at the same time, and with his example, if, you know, if we do have an officer who's just outside the parking lot, and they say, "A white male in a white t-shirt with tacky pants just robbed the sheets with a knife, and he's fleeing." If our officers are pulling into the parking lot, we're not just saying, "Get out and start shooting that individual," because oftentimes, people will have the same or similar clothing on, or we've, we've received a. on, or we've received a bad description from our dispatchers. So, you know, God forbid that we shoot somebody who's fleeing from the scene because they're scared, because there's an armed robbery occurring in the sheets. So it's just not practical, you know. But I understand what he's saying, that that is an option that you could have. But again, our training, we train our officers to a higher standard and hold them to a higher standard than what is written in state law.
Thank you for that answer. And I can well believe it. Yeah, Eddie, yes, I know that that is true. Yes, Betsy, please. Thank you.
I would just suggest to the board, as you walk through this process, several years ago, many of you know, and I think Elliot, you probably were the only board member on the board. We started to use tasers, but before that happened, the manager did, and chief at that time, did a great job of pulling together a group of people. I happen to be one of them. I believe Kim Wyatt was on there, and we had two police officers, board members, and I, Elliot, I can't remember which board members were there, but I know we had two, several business leaders. And one of the most valuable things that came out of that was obviously understanding the ways in which tasers get used in the use of force, but was the opening session that former Sergeant Frank McRoe did about the progression on the use of force, and what these officers are trained to do and walk through in a situation. And I think it would be very valuable for the board, and do it in a public meeting. Again, chief, you have to make that call, how that happens, maybe group with the board, but for the board to understand the process that an officer goes through when he or she, as Ms. Basala is on our board, as one of our officers, has to walk through a situation. Because when you have, when you can sit with an officer and have them walk through that with you, you gain not only a greater understanding of their training, but a greater understanding of what can happen in each of those circumstances. It was a very valuable thing, I know for me, and I'm a lawyer, but I'm not in law enforcement. But it was a very valuable thing for me to understand exactly what happens in that process. I think the one problem we all have, and this does not minimize any of the circumstances that have happened, is that many of these cases are, we only see pieces of what transpired. And one of the issues we know happens then, when we get into a courtroom on some of these issues, is that's why cases that sometimes we think, when I say "we," the lay public thinks is very obviously a bad thing, it doesn't end up bearing out fruit in a court of law. And that's partly because we get a fraction, you know, we get a, we get a, more than a snapshot, but we get a fraction of what happened. It's also amazing to me to think that these men and women have to walk through that protocol sometimes in the matter of a minute, 30 seconds.
Or less.
And I think about things that I do in my daily life, and how, and, Betsy, as you've said, Supervisor Whitman, these are issues of great, of grave circumstance, and they sometimes don't have a lot of time to step through that protocol. But I think we've got a really good group of men and women working for us, and their training is very good. And I think it'd be useful for the court to understand exactly what that training is.
Yes, Mr. Abrams. Yes, Elliot.
I'm glad that our attorney brought these things up, because I think it's very important to discuss these things, through, none of us are experts in this. And so like, if the chief says, "Let's not act without, or change without involving the rest of the region," I mean, that's a good point. Always create confusion. So I think, we'll be inform ourselves, gather people around that have information, offer. That'll make our, whatever decision we have more informed. I think we may have to sit down with other jurisdictions, make sure we aren't working at cross purposes. So let's realize that we aren't in this thing every day, and just to go off and say, "Okay, we have to do this because this happened." We don't really, you may not know all the facts.
Thank you for that. Yes, and Mr. Erickson.
I, in listening to the discussions, I wonder if we might not be a little better served by trying to define what we're trying to achieve. I mean, a policy is a policy. It's a piece of paper. What are we trying to prevent, or what do we want people to do?
Want to answer that?
Might be a more, and then, how do we go about achieving that goal, might be another way to approach the issue.
Well, let me, let me, let me say one thing. So I've gone to the Citizens Police Academy locally, sat through some use-of-force training, has sat through presentations by the State College Police Department, which they've made numerous trainings during the past month. All the recommendations here are not just pulled out of nowhere. They're made by Police Executive Research Forum. They're used by other police departments. So these are other law enforcement professionals that are making these. When I sat through one of the trainings at the Citizens Police Academy, one thing that was being taught was the 21-foot rule. The idea that if someone with a knife is coming at you, if they get within 21 feet, shoot them. And, and I asked the State College Police Department, "Do you still teach this?" And they said, "Yes." And the idea that everything is just perfect here locally, I think is, I mean, what's in place is a policy that a lot of legal experts think is unconstitutional. And so, I mean, the idea that everything is just fine the way it is, I think is naive. And in terms of what's trying to be achieved is, one is to sort of set training in terms of like, this is what's expected in terms of deadly force training, that these things be taught. And it's also accountability, because when you have very, very loose deadly force standards, which is often the case, because many of the laws around the country haven't been updated, that makes it more difficult to hold officers accountable. And obviously, you wouldn't be changing anything in criminal statute here. This would just be a local policy. But it would be, in terms of, you know, decisions about termination and so forth, that is something that would be relevant. And so in terms of training and accountability, I think, you know, a new policy would be helpful. And then, again, in terms of, you know, well, let's not do anything because no one else has done anything, well, nothing ends up happening, you know? And I think this is, this is something that needs to be addressed by a variety of different police departments, not just Patton Township. But I don't think that just because everyone else has problematic deadly force policies, that that's why we should keep ours problematic.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I, yes, I see Mr. Abrams.
Well, I have a problem with somebody saying that just because you deliberate on something means you don't want to do anything. I think that's nonsense.
Elliot, can you repeat that, please? I didn't hear it breaking up.
I think it's, if somebody says that the fact that you want to take some time and study this means you don't want to do anything, is complete nonsense. It means that things have to be deliberated. For example, I'd like to see an expert of color tell us, give us a better idea of how we can get people of color onto our forces. What are we doing wrong? What could we do to change this? We heard that things haven't changed in five or 10 years, quite various studies. This is not a, this is not brain surgery. This can be done, and we're just not doing it right yet. But that doesn't mean that it's anybody's fault on the current police force, obviously. And maybe we just don't know how to do this yet. Doesn't mean we don't want to.
I would agree to that, and I agree that things do need to be studied, but I also agree that we need to set a timeline and set a goal so that we do reach that. And my suggestion is that we, actually, I don't know if I made it officially, but that, oh, I did, actually, that I will reach out to Doug and, Doug Erickson, Chief Jolly, and talk about.
Supervisor Rob, I guess we'd like to call him that.
Right, exactly. I just want to thank you, just to finish my thoughts, that we'll, I might have to look at the tape to realize, to figure out what I just said, but that we will figure a path going forward to have further discussions about the, for me, it's specifically going to be the ordinance on forcible fleeing felon. Is that it? Yes, okay. Which is the case in point that Mr. Jones is bringing up as being, perhaps, at the state level, unconstitutional.
Questionable, yes.
Questionable, thank you, okay. I don't like, thank you.
Because the courts have not made that ruling.
Okay.
That is opinion of some, some people in the, in the industry think it's unconstitutional, but it has not been determined to be such.
Okay, thank you. But I would just like to, I will reach out, we'll get something on the books, for me anyway, and then decide whether to bring it to a meeting, have another work group, whatever. So I will do my part to keep it moving, is all I'm saying. And now Supervisor Rob.
As I listen to, as I listen to all of you and think about why we are having this work session, it's because the question of George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, and we have been fortunate here in Patton Township, but look at, Mr. Jones brought up Azazi. They hadn't had a shooting in 100 years. That's what was brought up at the public meeting, township meeting. They hadn't had that kind of shooting in that long period of time. So as we look into and research, again, trying to avoid what happened, I applaud Ms. Betsy for saying the board needs the training, to see what a police officer goes through, but also, they need the mental health aspect of it. A lot of our police officers need counseling through what they're going through, long hours, making decisions of life and death. So it's a double sore, and I'm coming from both angles. I'm coming from being a police chaplain, and I'm coming from being a person of color in a position that we are now addressing, police brutality, which has been going on for decades, decades, maybe not here in Patton Township. I applaud Chief Jolly and his officers. This is the first department that I can say I totally trust, totally. But as I'm going through my years, church members, meetings, community is saying, "How come we don't have anybody that look like us on the force? How come our boards are not represented?" So I say to you, as we move forward, and I mean move forward, chief, I thank you. I thank Doug and the staff for bringing these work sessions together. Betsy, your work in legal, in the legal field, keeping us all together, I know it's extremely hard, but I thank you. And to my board, as we move forward, not only listening to chief, to Mr. Jones, but actually listening to not only our community in Patton, but the surrounding community that has a diversity. Elliot, you hit it on the nose. People are talking. This is a diverse world, and where are we in this time? We're talking about George Floyd. We're talking about Breonna Taylor. I can go on and on. I sent a video to chief and to Doug of police officers in Colorado who stopped a family of young ladies, one six-years-old, handcuffed them and made them lay on the ground, to only find out it was a mistaken license plate, not only to the car, but it was for a motorcycle. Our community is talking about that, because that video is being shown over and over and over again, hearing a six-year-old screaming and crying and laying on the ground. A mistake, but has now traumatized a six-year-old. We are fortunate for Patton Township's police department, but we still have a lot to learn across the board, on both sides. So as we research this, I only pray that we come up with a solution that works for all, not just at this time, but in the future, because we are changing decades of a history of abuse. So thank you for that time.
Thank you for that contribution. And I think you might have the last word, although.
Anita has her hand up.
Anita has her hand up.
Very brief. I support all Pam has said, and would hope we could move forward looking at a deadly force policy for the future, because the times are challenging us. And I hope the chief takes from tonight's discussion, everyone here appreciates and affirms the excellence of our current police department and its leadership. But the times are challenging us to reexamine the training and reexamine the accountability. That's what's happening nationally, and it has echoes and repercussions locally. So I just support all that Pam and everyone else has said, and hope we move forward with action, that a deadly force policy for the future, because the future demands it. Thank you.
I say, "Here, here, and we can only get better, and we will do it very circumspectly." Thank you for everyone involved tonight. Mr. Erickson, yes?
Yeah, just if I can indulge for a minute. Last night, the State College Borough Council passed a ordinance, and I'm reading it with you at this point, basically that requires face coverings in certain circumstances inside buildings open to public, grocery stores, transport transit vehicles while waiting to enter a building, like a line up on a sidewalk to get into an eating establishment or something like that. And also, and there are exceptions, the other in waiting lines, they're managing, putting limits on how many people can wait in a line to enter a business. They also have instituted limitations on gathering size to include personal, private homes. As you know, Penn State is looking to start in-school, in-person classes at the end of August. If you did not get to see the town hall meeting, that was last Thursday, we can provide you a link to that. Penn State is working on doing many things that they can do on campus and with their students, but obviously, they've said they have limits to those, limitations with those that live off-campus. The question is, would the board be interested in considering something along those lines? And if so, I'll put something on the August 19th agenda.
Oh, move.
I know, I know we can't vote, but yeah.
Quick question. When we met earlier with the solicitor and so forth, I didn't know if we had the tools to enforce a mass ordinance.
Looking at, I am looking into that. I was, that was one of the things I was doing right before the meeting started. I was looking through the.
Yes.
Second class code. The managers have talked about a little bit of it collaboratively. We're going to work on seeing where our authority might come from to make that, to do that. But our first chance, our next chance will be on the 19th to look at something. So I'll start working along those lines. I will send out a copy of the ordinance to the supervisors and if, I'll send it out separately. If you have comments about issues that you want to have discussed on the 19th, then I'll ask that you return those comments to me and I'll include it in the agenda for the 19th.
Sounds good.
I think our, the fellow municipalities around here, I think are all looking at something to do something similar. Some people would like straight-up uniformity across the region. They've been told you probably can't. It's a nice, nice desire, but it may not, may not be practical. Different municipalities are going to have different, different outlooks on different issues, so.
Okay.
So we'll, I will put that on the agenda for the 19th.
Great, thank you. And any, any other words for this evening? I think we've been very thorough and very diligent.
So my task is I have scribbled down my notes, is to come up with a draft resolution slash ordinance on military surplus equipment, 1033 program, to work with Tyler and Betsy Dupuis on both the no-knock and the use of deadly force, to figure out what other input we can get from other interested parties and also look at putting some timelines together and perhaps if we're out of a uniform mind, coming up with some draft language that the board could review.
Okay, great, thank you.
Some of that will be on the 19th agenda. Can't guarantee, and then also to some point to talk about the tactical response team.
Okay, tall order, busy month, important stuff.
Yep.
And our zoning ordinance.
Patton Township. Sure, hang on a second, you're right? Okay, I'm gonna put you on speakerphone. Okay, go ahead.
Hi, Jim Dain, Park Forest again. I'd just like to thank Mr. Jones for his research and bringing these issues forward, the board for considering them, the staff for all their work and helping out on it, and especially Chief Jolly for all his research. And finally, the excellent job that our police department does. Thank them very much. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Thanks, Jim. Anything else, chief?
Anything for the good of the order?
Please. Do you have something else you want to say, Sam?
No, no. It's late, I don't want to hold people up anymore.
Okay, I'm not seeing any hands waving.
Thank you.
Except mine. I don't think we need a motion, but I think I can officially close the meeting. I hereby adjourn this meeting with great thanks and gratitude.